Okay, thank you, Margot. Let's call the meeting to order at six oh one.
Six thirty one.
Six thirty one, holy cow, time's flying faster than I thought. Like to welcome everybody to our regular meeting, December thirteenth. Our first item on the agenda is to approve the minutes from the regular meeting held on November eighth, twenty twenty two.
I'll make a motion that we approve the regular meeting minutes from November eighth, twenty twenty two. I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Next item is the audience of citizens. Do we have anyone? We've got lots of folks here. Who's here to speak?
Quite enough. We had an application earlier this week, also Jim and I did as well, by the ambulance farm, which I know created an accident.
Yep.
And they say it's been sort of a half-hearted attempt, although that may have only been temporary thing our guys did, I don't know. But, you know, they're not gonna be able to keep water over the road signs up there all winter long, the plows are gonna run them over.
Yeah.
Have you given me any kind of indication as to whether or not friction's coming out?
Yeah, Joyce and I have been speaking with the state DOT up in Tylerville about this, really, since the reconstruction of the road and the ineffective, apparently ineffective effort to correct the situation. Last storm that we had, we saw the water go over the road and we made some calls about that. We're pretty frustrated with all of that, as everyone is, I'm sure. The state indicated that they think that the problem is created by a clogged or a catch basin that is full. I don't believe that that's the case, but they're jetting out the basin to make sure that the pipe is clear and then we're gonna see what happens with that. I don't think that that's the problem, but that was their solution at that point.
Well, there's one creation that is not training, but the other is separate than that.
I know. We've talked with them about that and we're just gonna have to continue to harass them until they address it. I don't know that they're going to be able to do anything this winter, because it's winter time at this point, but we will see how things progress. We have certainly had a long conversation with them. It was an interesting conversation in the sense that I called them and asked them if they would get some sand and salt on the road or be prepared to do so, because it was going to freeze overnight. Well, we can't set up overtime for, if we don't know it's gonna freeze, I said, "Well, I can't bet ya, I can't tell you the future, but if I could bet you a hundred dollars, I'll bet you it's gonna freeze tonight." So we went on and on. I asked her again and again. Finally, I said, "Okay, so we're going to put our guys on overtime to put sand and salt on your road, so that we can make sure that people are safe, so we don't have another accident." She said, "Would you like to speak with my supervisor?" I said, "Sure." He was supposed to call, he never called, but I got a call from our town crew a little bit longer later that the state had gone out and put some salt and science out there. We're just gonna have to keep on keeping on.
I'm not sure if school bus route.
It's a lot of, a lot of people travel through that road.
Yeah, not to add to that, but across from the town garage, it's coming out of the shoulder, and if you notice Sunday morning, there's car tracks in the field, someone shot off the road, there were burnouts for the same reason.
No, that's a tough spot, too. That's, and I'm not sure what the solution is there. That's just when the groundwater gets so high, I guess.
Their shoulders, they need to scrape the shoulder down. The grass is too high.
They used, I remember when I was younger, they'd go around with like a little bulldozer blade and they'd go underneath the things and push it off so that there wasn't a burn, but they don't seem to do that anymore for whatever reasons, too bad.
Yeah. Different time. But anyway, we're, we certainly are aware of it. We have continued to try to get them to correct the situation. We've gone out there a number of times and just pushed some dirt out of the way so the road, the water will drain off of the road into the ditch like it's supposed to, but haven't been able to have much more progress than where we are right now. Anybody else? Jane?
Yeah, Paul, what is happening with the American Rescue money? How much do we have?
We distributed all of that money to, or all of the applications to Dwayne and Jim. We have got, received a couple more actually since then, but we're reviewing all those applications. Now we'll probably be talking about them in one of the next few selectmen's meetings, give people an opportunity to come and defend what they're asking for, to discuss and make our own recommendations to the Board of Finance.
It looks like there's been more ask than there is money.
There have been.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If we come to the Board of Selectmen's Meeting, are we gonna be able to have a list of the applicants?
I would imagine so, yeah. Yeah.
You said something before about October.
I think I, I think in October, I said we were going to, we were hopefully gonna have all of the applications in by the beginning of November. So, we've distributed what we have and we have received a couple of more. Mike, you've had your hand up a couple of times.
This is a, this is an email I'm gonna, my, I dropped out. That I sent to Trooper Kraus a month ago. And, let's see there. A month ago, and he got, I'm back today. And, I'm just curious as to what your feeling is about the response and your plan about what we're gonna do with, with.
Well, based on your emails, I contacted the state. Number one, I think Trooper Kraus asked you where you got your information.
I sent it to him south.
That's what I saw. I contacted the state after we saw where you got it from and, you know, none of that has been published yet. I don't know who you spoke with that you got that information, but it's not published information. The interesting thing about that information is that my quick review of it and my conversation with the DOT is that the numbers that came off of the recent study from October of this year actually are better than they were when they did the study in 2019. That the average speed going south is thirty-three miles an hour and the average speed going north is thirty-six miles an hour. Now, while that is still speeding, it is not the reckless, dangerous speeding that you describe in your emails. We are, we, our troopers and our policemen are out, as Trooper Kraus has indicated to numerous times, we are out covering all of the roads in the town, not just Main Street. I understand your concern, I understand that your house and your business is right on Main Street.
Well, it's not just, it's not just singled out to the inn. It's the entire Main Street and Village District. I mean, and I put in the email response to, to all of you, that DOT has a certain way of skewing the numbers. If they take forty thousand cars a week, they can manipulate the numbers in such that, of course, you can say that it's thirty-three, because if you average between two in the morning and three in the afternoon, of course, you can, you can reduce in the size of the numbers. I mean, these are two days of numbers right here.
I think we all know that you can do whatever you want to with numbers, Mike, and, but when I, like I said, the quick review that I made of this information was that they actually removed all of the slow speed. Anybody that was going less than ten miles an hour, or actually fifteen miles an hour, was removed from the numbers. So that says to me that that average, if you average those out, the average would actually be higher, if you, would be lower if you included those numbers. So the average speed is higher now than what is actually happening, if you wanna do things with numbers. All I'm saying is that the numbers that we got this time, thank, thanks to your information, we would not have known that these numbers aren't published yet, but actually show that there is an improvement. And that's what I'm looking at. It's not.
I'm gonna disagree to disagree with that, because I did go back to 2019. I could be mistaken, but percentage-wise, the speeds, like right here, for two days, forty-one to sixty-five miles an hour in a thirty mile an hour zone is one thousand eight hundred and sixty-three cars. That's two days.
Yeah, I don't think that that's the proper interpretation, but we'll look at it.
My first, and I, and I think Trooper Kraus asked you, is, that is eighteen hundred and sixty-three vehicles out of how many that travel one fifty-four every day? Ten thousand, twenty thousand?
Between five and six thousand.
Five, six thousand.
So the percentage.
So where does that percentage, you know, you have to have the whole numbers, not just, not just that number.
Like I said.
It's still one thousand eight hundred and sixty-three cars and trucks.
I don't believe that that's accurate. I looked at this and I went through percentages and the percentage of the four days.
It was actually, well, okay.
Four days.
Two full days and two half days.
Those days, the percentage of people going less than thirty-five was sixty percent. The percentage of people going less than forty was almost eighty percent. So these number is totally not reflect that. So.
But you still have twenty percent going over the speed limit.
These are the numbers?
That's not, that's not what I, that's what I said in the very beginning of this conversation. Yes, an average of thirty-three miles an hour is over the speed limit, but it is not the deadly reckless speed, speeding that is being represented here. And, and I think that we have got to depend on our state and our police force to enforce these rules as they do. I don't think, Mike, that this situation is as bad as you are displaying.
How can you disagree with those?
Because I don't agree with these numbers. So I think that you and me should have another meeting up at the state and go through these numbers, okay? I'm happy to do that.
And that's fine, but these are their numbers, they're not mine.
These are your numbers. You took, you took these, this is not the numbers that I saw and the information I looked at.
Go through all of them. I spent time taking the numbers off for those two days.
Yep.
They might lie.
So did I, and I didn't see this.
It would be silly for me to come and make up these numbers.
Well, I didn't see this when I looked at them, so I just think that if we want, if you wanna continue the conversation, which you do, then we should have that conversation with people can, that can actually look at these numbers, decipher them for us and tell us what the situation is. And I did that myself today on the telephone. I would be, I would be happy to take another ride up to Newington with you and have that conversation with the people that did this study.
Is there a way, instead of just you and Mike going to Newington?
Yeah.
Is there a way to bring them to here and have a town meeting and let, let them explain to the town residents what, why, what can possibly be done? I don't, this has been going on, this has been going on for a couple of years now and, and again, I understand what Mike's saying, but we have to try to come to some sort of resolution here.
We can certainly bring, we can ask them to come down here. It's unlikely that they're gonna come down here for a town meeting to talk about numbers.
But, but not even, not only the numbers, just the, the traffic volume.
What they're going to tell you, what they're going to tell you is the same, what they're gonna tell the town is the same thing that they told me today, that the numbers from their study does not justify further enforcement from them, and they don't believe that any trooper or police officer will issue a ticket for a first violation at the speeds that are being indicated here. We give tickets all the time to repeat offenders and to, to gross offenders.
What's, what's an gross offenders about forty-one to sixty-five? All right, at the end of the day, and I've said this hundreds of times in our emails, to, to put the pressure on Trooper Kraus and the, and the constables to give out this many tickets, which would solve our deficit budget in a month, it's to change the pattern of the roadway for once and for all.
What, what do you mean by change the pattern? You, you keep, I'm just, I'm just gonna, voice, I responded to your email when you sent it to Dwayne and I, and you sent it very respectful and you seemed to agree with what, most of what I was saying. And you keep referring to Deep River as the Village District. I don't believe that the center of Deep River is the Village District.
It's on the books.
It's, but it's, it's the commercial, it's the commercial shopping center for Deep River, Chester, Essex, Killingworth, Hattam, maybe people from Sabre, you know, everybody comes here, it's always been that way. There's two major roads, state roads that feed our town and they're not going away. And you, and you mentioned, read, and you mentioned, "Well, people should go on Route Nine." Well, if you don't have business, have a sign at the entrance to town, if you're not doing business in Deep River, then don't come into town, use Route Nine.
Well, it's not that, Jim.
But you said that numerous times, that you, you said that you should direct people to Route Nine. How would you do that in practicality?
If you're going to drive through Deep River at these speeds, which are DOT speeds, and that's two days.
Yep.
That aside, you're not conducting business in town, you're cutting through.
How are you going to delineate who is and isn't, and whether they should use a state road that's taxpayer-funded?
If you were to, like Madison, like Clinton, they've slowed traffic down, they're major arteries, busier arteries than Deep River. People who have to slow down to cut through will use Route Nine. If they're not conducting business in our town, why are we being subjected to their speeding? If they can.
You're saying something about Madison, Madison not, your comparison on that point in orange here, Mike. Madison, Madison has a stop sign and a stop light on Main Street from the Firehouse to RJ Julius or whatever that corner is there. That's not what we have here.
It's not what we have.
Okay, but leading up to those stop signs and stoplights going each way, I'll argue with you about the speed there, because I travel that road and they travel fast there. Again, I'm gonna say it, I said it before, and we aren't like the rest of the state. I travel fifty to fifty-five thousand miles a year with my job. I'm on the highway, back roads, every day for my job. And I don't care where you are, whether you're in the city, the rural area, people drive fast today.
Not the speeding that.
And again, I'm not, I'm not saying that we should be like the rest of the state, but I'm just telling you where I travel. And I travel some affluent communities down on the West Coast and Gold Coast down there, and they fly through Darien, Westport, Willing, all them also, so it's.
When you give people the opportunity to drive fast, they will. We had a group come, came down from the state and a couple town planner companies that are subcontractors, we walked, there was twenties. I'm not sure what happened.
Eighteen of the DOT, I guess.
But it seemed to me during that conversation that they were looking for ways to throttle down the speeds, and that's all you really need. That takes the pressure off handing out tickets and creating bad will for the cops. And the cops don't wanna do that, I don't blame them, but there has to be.
Cops do wanna do that if, if there's gross negligence.
Right, but to hand out eighteen hundred tickets in two days, nobody wants to.
Well, eighteen hundred tickets is not the right number.
Can you help the state throttle it down, Mike? Giving out bits to put roundabouts in communities.
So now we're going into the direction that should be looked at for Deep River, slow the traffic down. Businesses will come to this town, small businesses, if they feel like they're in a town that has control downtown. This is not controlled.
Where would you put a roundabout?
I'm not the expert, I'm just, I'm just saying. And you guys aren't the expert, but you know, if we put enough pressure on them, I mean, we pay taxes to be safe.
I'll tell you where they wanna put it.
You know, it's, there are a number of different ways.
The corner of Southworth. You wanna put one at the, at the corner of Kirkland.
You will create.
That's not gonna work.
You will create an atmosphere that I think will encourage more economic growth in this town. Right now, we're just a cut through. We are. How do you justify?
Mike, that, that brings us back to the last time that you came into our conversations. You and I, you and I had had a numerous conversations early on in my career, and you came in, and one day, the last time that we, that you actually came in to have the conversation, I asked you a question, because you were making statements like you just made, and I asked you a question and you agreed in the affirmative. You're telling me that people are driving the speed limit in Essex, when they get to Deep River, they accelerate like crazy, because it's just a cut through, and then they slow down in Chester, and you said yes. And I will tell you point-blank, that is not what's happening. This town has more enforcement than the other towns, this town is doing everything we can. We have more than just a Main Street to pay attention to. The road up there, Warsaw Street, is just paved, that's where we're focusing right now, that's a dangerous road and people are driving faster because of this pavement. We are doing what we can now. If, if we wanted to change the configuration of our Main Street, the first thing they wanna do is narrow the lanes. So the lanes are down to eleven feet, I think is the new thing. They've already done that on the one side at the, at the south end of town. The next thing they wanna do is put obstacles in the road, whether that's bump outs in the pavement, change the direction, but that study indicates, and I'm happy to share that with you if you wanna come in, that study indicates that there are not places to do that. What they wanna do is to make this place safer, is they wanna change the intersection at, at Essex Street, so that's a T-intersection. They wanna eliminate this Veterans Way, they wanna eliminate the, the exit, they wanna revise the exit and entrances at Walgreens, they wanna put a roundabout up at Kirkland Street. What, the only thing that they agreed to that I, that I a hundred percent agree with is a raised crosswalk at the library. I would prefer to have one at the two entrances to town, as you saw me and agreed with me when I told them that. They have not agreed to that yet, but they're, they're studying that in New Haven. I volunteered Deep River to, to be part of that study, but they have not responded in any affirmative. So we're working on that, too. All of the things that you're saying are based on what I believe is your manipulation of numbers, but let's look at them together and let's look at them with the state and see what we can come up.
I sent you the numbers and these are the two days.
I looked at numbers and didn't see this, so.
They're, they're right there. I, I, it would be a miss of me to make these up.
Well, I would think so, too.
Yeah. Those are pretty alarming.
I think it was, it happened a few years ago, I know we were talking about this planning zoning, and one thing which they suggested, but it didn't go anywhere, was to change the direction to have slanted parking on one side of the road, no parking on the other, and then in a different park, slanting and so that.
That's interesting. Yeah, that's, that's an interesting zigzag kind of thing, like might slow people down. I will tell you what the state.
We don't have the property.
No, we don't have the land for that, but the, what the state observed in this is that people are slowing down when they get to where people are parking already on the center of the road, because it narrows the lanes. So people are slowing down when they get to that. What we need to do is try to slow them down in front of the inn and then coming into town from Chester. Those are the two places where they're coming down a hill and, and coming into town, and that's where the speed limit slows down from forty to thirty, and that's where the average needs to be put.
What I see is that when they pass by the bank going towards Chester, that's when they speed up, but that's when they, they're not, the cars parked on the side of the road.
Right, yeah, yeah.
At the end of the day, we're not the professionals, but we do pay people who know how to do this stuff.
Yeah, and your emails all tell us how much they manipulate the numbers, so we're not getting the real facts from them. Those are the people.
Well, they've done that so that they don't become responsive, at the end of the day. Again, that's their numbers and they can skew those.
Those are not the numbers that I saw, but.
And I, you know, whether that, there is, there are people who speak, you know, and whether it's eighteen hundred or twenty-eight hundred or eight hundred, people are going over the speed limit. And, you know, and I've always said the old adage is, there's never a cop around when you need them, those guys are around doing other, you know, Route eighty out by my house, there's been some, there's been fatal accidents by the town dump because of speed over, over the years, because of downhill and all that kind of stuff. There are so many in the thirty-plus miles of road we have, you can't have an officer everywhere.
No.
Short of redesigning the road, which we have no control over, we can give pressure, we can keep calling and we can keep bitching and moaning and you, and all this kind of stuff, but it's, it's gonna, it's gonna take time if it's gonna happen. And we can't be everywhere enforcing the speed, because as soon as the cop leaves Main Street, somebody comes flying through and there's eighteen hundred and sixty-four. And I'm not, I'm not making light of it, and then, but like Angus said and Dwayne said, we, we're people that come to you, I said in my response to you, is I'm sure people get to your place late and they're speeding coming into town, because they don't wanna be like checking into the river when they're, you know, and that's, and that's a fact.
We're starting.
Everybody in this room speeds.
We're starting up the ladder with the issue.
Oh, yeah.
You know, we have to come down below and solve the problem.
Yep.
Not by saying we need more police officers.
And I'm not saying that it's not solvable, I agree that we as a society speed.
And the towns that know how to take advantage of, we have a great demographic for a Main Street development. We have towns that have killed Athens, and I've said that before. Putnam, they took care of their downtown, their big problem is trying to get people to Putnam. They successfully did that, but they have a Main Street that people wanna come to it. It has a Village District, Downtown, whatever term you wanna use, that has the vibe that people wanna come and set up shops. We don't have that.
Yeah, I disagree with you, but.
But we're not the professionals.
No, but I disagree with your appraisal of businesses not wanting to come here. We've got, we've got one empty shop.
I was gonna say, educate me, the only empty building on Main Street right now, I might be wrong, is the Citizens Bank Building.
What happened to them, anyway? He was gonna do the restaurant.
He was gonna do all kinds of stuff.
He was gonna do all kinds of stuff, but that, but you say, I mean, if somebody wanted to come.
There's three lots across the street from me, you know, perfect opportunity for somebody to come in and do something really creative.
Well, that's, well, yeah, and that has to do with how that piece of property is marketed by the state agents and stuff like that, beyond town control. You know, next to the Nest, they, I understand, they just bought the tattoo parlor and they're gonna expand the Nest, so that vacancy is going away, that's what I've heard.
They're renting.
Or they're renting, they're renting, but they're, they're gonna fill them.
We can talk about that until the cows come home.
No, I know.
That owner has got grand plants.
Oh, right, but I'm, what I'm saying is, we don't have a, a Main Street full of empty buildings.
No, we do not.
We have more, more empty ones in Downtown Essex than are at Deep River, or Main Street.
And Chester, something in Sabre.
Just one question regarding the traffic, because I, I see a lot of residents in town doing business, and many of them do complain about the speeds of traffic in town, but even if you look at these numbers and cut them in half, that's still a lot of people going extremely fast. Do we have any records that are available to us that can show us what our police department does in terms of speed, traffic enforcement?
I'm sure we do, Mike asked the trooper for them this morning, so I'm sure we do.
Well, you're the chief constable, so you should have that information.
I've got it, I've got it in my office, I'll give it to you as soon as we get done here. Of course I don't have that information, it's upstairs.
Right, so we should have, that should be part of this discussion, to know what is being done and what the results are. If we don't have that information.
Well, the results are in the average right now. The average has gotten better over the past two years than it, than it was. The average speed of thirty-three miles an hour is pretty good speed, the average speed of thirty-six mile an hour is a pretty good speed, when you compare it with this. This is not accurate information.
Well, another part of that skew, which is that they did this in October, look and see when the date, when the other one was. So we're at a time of shoulder season in Deep River when we don't have the out-of-town people, so that changes the numbers, because if the volume is down.
It could be, leafpeppers are coming through town. You know, you can argue all you want to about all this kind of stuff, Mike, let's go past that, let's sit down with the state of Connecticut and see what they wanna do.
We gotta keep working in the right direction. Is it gonna be fixed tomorrow? No. Is it gonna be fixed next year?
This is something, this is something that's been happening.
We can strive to go in the right direction.
Jane and Greg and Fred, you guys can talk about, this has been happening on this Main Street for twenty-five or thirty years, people have been asking to try to fix this stuff. It's better than it was, so, and that's all I can tell you, is it's better than it was. So let's, let's move on from this, is there?
I have another.
I can't see the time, that's fine, thank you. Can I just see what time? Can you tell me, I can't see the time.
It's seven o'clock.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
I'm gonna follow up on the status of the RTC endorsement of Brian Phillips for planning the zoning, endorsement nine weeks ago.
Yeah.
Where that stands.
Thank you, I'm not sure, we haven't discussed it, I'm sure, I know you've spoken with them.
I have.
I think you have, too, and that's great, and we'll try to move that forward.
I also want to follow up on the RTC endorsement of Ben Whalen for zoning board of appeals, he endorsed them sixteen weeks ago.
That has been asked and answered.
I'm sorry?
That was asked and answered, I agree, the last one.
No, no, I have, we have not had an update, I don't know where it stands.
It stands exactly where it was when you were, when you last asked.
That's a month ago, was there a plan to move to fill the board of zoning?
There is a man, there is a plan to fill that board, but I don't believe that, I don't, I can tell you that I'm not gonna make that nomination, if one of these fellows If one of these fellows wants to, then they can, but I'm not going to.
I, I will not, also.
It's not, while you may have endorsed it, it's not something that I'm going to move forward.
All right, so this is your communication, saying that he is not under consideration for that, is that how this works?
I, I think that would be fair pricing, yeah.
But Brian Phillips still is under consideration.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you. As a, just as a procedure, and civility towards groups working hard to get these boards and commissions filled, leaving folks in limo for sixteen weeks is, is not ideal.
Thank you. I'm gonna ask that we move through a couple of these, we can move a couple of these. We've got a town meeting scheduled for immediately following this, at seven o'clock. I think if we can just go, I'd like to ask if we can deal with item four and deal with item seven, and then go to Nicholas and deal with item eight, then we can.
Do the other one later.
Table the other two, there's not, not more.
Okay, that's fine with me.
Okay, so we're gonna need a motion to do that, to, when we get to them. Let's go to number four, which is the building permit reimbursement. That is, we've been requested, it doesn't happen very often, but there was a request for a building permit that was pulled almost immediately following, after they, they made their application, they gave their money, and they pulled their permit. Dick is, our, our building inspector has requested that we authorize that reimbursement. It's, I think he's keeping.
A small amount.
A small amount, so he's gonna recommend returning seventy percent of the permits fee because of the work that was already, has already been done on the files, so. So it'd be a refund of about, of three hundred and twenty dollars and sixty cents.
Three hundred and twenty and sixty cents. I make a motion that we reimburse for a building permit in the amount of three hundred and twenty dollars and sixty cents.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Can I have a motion to table item five and item six?
I'll make a motion to table item five and six of the agenda.
I second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Next item on the agenda is tax refunds from the tax collector. This month, we have three refund requests for a total of one thousand two hundred and sixty-three dollars and thirty-five cents.
I'll make a motion for tax refund from the tax collector in the amount of one thousand two hundred and sixty-three dollars and thirty-five cents.
I second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Next item on the agenda is Nicholas Olson, industrial park property. If you have some questions.
Yeah, I know you guys, I didn't catch you before Thanksgiving, but I think I reminded you at the end of October that you'd get me an update, you know, by winter, and then winter was here, and then here we are.
Yeah, there, there is no real update. The attorney is looking at things, and as to how we go about that, just that we were, I have not been pressing her for any answer on that. We have to have an internal conversation, obviously in public, but an internal conversation about how we want to dispense with that property. There, the, the history of that land was taken by the town and developed as an incubator-type space with some leases and rents that I'm trying to obtain for you, you requested. The other thought is, as you've proposed, that we just do a straight-up sale of the property. I feel pretty strongly that the incubator concept has worked very well in Deep River. We've had some businesses that have started out in garages and landed and moved out of the town buildings and bought their own spaces. I think that's a, it's, it's a, it's an honorable thing to do, and I think it's a, it's a positive thing to do to help younger businesses. It also stretches out the longer, it might not get us the amount of return, the immediate return, financial return, that, that just straight-up sale would make. So it's something we need to consider, and something we need to continue to talk about. But there's no, no update as far as whether we're ready to put it on the market next month or not.
Okay, well, I'd like to bring up that, you know, there are incubator buildings, some of them that were developed by the town and eventually sold off. But those three lots were specifically for the next step of small business.
That's right.
Like the top-notch that has one, the Stonemason bought one, you know? So for that to go back to an incubator size, we have many vacant, probably the most vacant industrial parks ever been with incubator space. So probably by adding one, I know Ted McKenzie's, I think, is pretty empty. There's a couple on the old building that's empty. Adding more of those mini units might not be in the best interest. And that, that third parcel, being three of the, out of the three, I think you're wrong in saying it was supposed to be an incubator, I think it was supposed to be for small business development.
Well, I think that that, we're talking about the, the linguistic there, you know, the semantic. The incubator, maybe not start out incubator, but expanding the smaller businesses that are still not ready to, to go. That's what that was proposed for, and that's what I intended to say, if that's not what was expressed, and that's, that's my mistake.
Right.
But that was, that was the next step, that was supposed to be the next step. And one of, that, that lot is available because a business that started on his garage, then moved into the incubator space, wanted to grow and, and purchased, and agreed to purchase that, but then moved out, out of that agreement, and bought his own place over in, over on Winter Avenue. So that leaves us with that lot available, and we need to determine whether we want to do the same thing or something a little different. And that's just something that we haven't decided yet.
I'd just like to make a note, I'm on my second winter, waiting for an answer.
There you go.
My, my business breath is a hinge of your decision. And, you know, there's been comments that, you know, there's been other interest or other people inquiring.
There has been.
Okay, but there's been eighteen months, and nobody else has come down to these meetings.
That's correct.
Nobody else has come to the boards, nobody else has emailed all the selectmen involved, nobody else is inquiring.
Thank you.
So I'd like to make that, you know, clarified.
It's noted.
We're here, we're ready to go, and I haven't been about it, I've given a great, great offer for it, and I don't know what it would take, you know, to keep trying to move this forward for the development of Deep River, and, you know, being already a member of the industrial park, to keep on moving forward.
Mm-hmm. Noted, thank you. Okay, we've tabled those other items, and that's the last item on the agenda. So why don't we motion to adjourn it?
Make a motion to adjourn it. Seven oh seven.
Second.
All those in favor?
Okay, now the town meeting.
And now we'll open up for the town meeting. Paul, are you gonna run this? Okay.
This is a squeaky, this is a squeaky chair. That's the squeaky chair.
You guys have any interest? You wanna do it? You got your paper? This has got my notes on it. You wanna make the motion, Jim? All right, I'm gonna call the meeting to order at seven oh eight. Special town meeting, I don't think I have the, the call of this meeting. But I don't need to have the call of the meeting, I'm simply going to ask for nominations for the town meeting moderator, who will need the call of the meeting.
I, I nominate Dwayne Gates as the moderator of the town.
We have a second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Jane, the meeting is yours.
I would like to nominate Paula Weglar as a clerk. Read the call.
Why don't you appoint her?
Appoint.
Thank you.
Appoint Paula Weglar.
Legal notice, Town of Deep River, special town meeting Tuesday, December thirteenth, twenty twenty-two, immediately following the Board of Selectmen regular meeting, the Richard H. Smith Town Hall. To approve actions of the Board of Selectmen at its regular meeting of November eighth, twenty twenty-two. One, appointments to the Community Health Committee. Nancy Howard, regular, term to expire twelve one, twenty twenty-four. Dawn Norton, regular, term to expire twelve one, twenty twenty-four. Elizabeth Schofield, regular, term to expire twelve one, twenty twenty-four. Two, appointments to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Alexander E. Strabel, regular, term to expire twelve one, twenty twenty-five. Frederick E. Jordan, regular, term to expire twelve one, twenty twenty-five. Michael A. Danello, alternate, term to expire twelve one, twenty twenty-five. Dated at Deep River, Connecticut, this Wednesday, November thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. The Board of Selectmen Angus L. McDonald, Dwayne A. Gates, James A. Wilson.
Okay, we've heard the call. Can I have a motion to accept the call?
I'll move it.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Okay, motion to approve item one on the call of the meeting. Do I have a motion to approve it?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none, how about a vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. That's it.
Okay, item two.
Item two, planning and zoning.
Oh.
I move we accept item two.
Okay, motion to approve, great. Second?